Join me in a salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure. Call the meeting to order. Have the approval of the minutes, motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on August thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corsh, seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. That brings us now to our treasurer's report. Charles?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Um, financial results for the last couple of months have been in line with our expectations, i.e. our budget. Uh, as we said, the building department, justice courts, and docs continue to do very well, better than last year. The tax collections to date from the first fiscal year billing are five point four billion dollars, which is consistent pace with prior years. That's in good shape. And our only recent capital expenditure note was a light duty truck for the highway department, about eighty thousand dollars, which was budgeted. I just want to touch out, we have, as you may be aware, three financially related resolutions tonight. The first one is the acceptance of the annual audited financial statement for the year ended May twenty twenty three. Our auditors issued a clean opinion on that. Uh, so we're in good shape as far as internal controls are concerned. Uh, and they'll soon start the audit of twenty twenty. The second one is to clarify the purpose of the capital reserve. This is a reserve portion of our fund balance. It's on our trial balance today, about one point five million dollars. And the documentation supporting it was unclear. So we thought it best to put forward a resolution to clarify the purpose of this fund, and the purpose is uh, for capital projects that are approved by the board of trustees. And then there's a third resolution, uh, asking you to approve an agreement with an accounting services firm. This firm will provide basic accounting and reporting services and report to me. And they're replacing a consultant that we are currently using. So it's within the budget, and just kind of a replacement of a more broad-based firm.
That's local.
First, that's local versus a, an individual that's remote. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions for the treasurer?
No.
Thank you, Charles.
Thanks, Charles.
Thank you. To have a motion to accept this report.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Haye, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. That brings us to our department committee reports, and I'll begin with the police department, fire department, and the ambulance corps. So for the month of August twenty twenty four, the Sag Harbor Village Police Department had nine hundred and sixty-five calls for service. We had fourteen aggravated unlicensed operation. We had ten suspended registrations, two disorderly conduct, three open container arrests. We had three pedaling without a license, and we had thirty-six motor vehicle accidents. So year to date, we have a hundred and sixty-two arrests. We have twelve DWI arrests, and for the month of August twenty twenty four, we had a hundred and fifty-four uniform traffic tickets were issued, a total of one thousand and thirty-eight for the year. That brings us to the fire department. In the month of August twenty twenty four, the fire department volunteered for over three thousand four hundred and eighty-four man-hours. During the month, the officers and members of the department responded to eighty-one calls for service. These calls included a structure fire, a dumpster fire, a boat fire, and we had pool chemicals leaking that had caught on fire. Uh, we also responded to seven motor vehicle accidents, and there were a couple of gas leaks. Even though there were less calls for help this month than last, the members put in more hours with our annual carnival that is held every year at Havens Beach. Even though it wasn't the greatest forecast for the week, um, they still fill the fairgrounds almost every night. The biggest crowds were definitely on the fireworks night, where we hosted one of the best fireworks displays in recent memory. It's a great opportunity for the community, and it gets rave reviews from young and old. That's the report from our first assistant chief, Michael Brier, Sag Harbor Fire Department. That brings me to the Sag Harbor Volunteer Ambulance Corps. In the month of August twenty twenty four, we had a hundred and seven emergency calls, uh, which is right on par with last year. We had a hundred and eight. We had four work nights, one meeting, six work details, for a total man-hours of one thousand two hundred and seventy-six hours. I just want to thank our emergency services for getting us through another very, very hectic summer. They do an outstanding job, and I've had little to no complaints about our emergency services from the public. So I just wanted to thank them again for their outstanding uh, service to this community. Okay, that brings us to trustee deputy mayor Haye with the justice court, parks and open space, and the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start with the justice court. I also um, will give a report on the Parks and Open Space Committee, and Drew Harvey's here will also report out on the Parks and Open Space Committee as well. Uh, I'm gonna start uh, with the summary of the justice court and Parks and Open Space work, and then I'll turn it over to Drew. Um, for August, in the month of August, we had a hundred and eighty new cases, um, which parallels what what the mayor just reported from the police department, um, involving a hundred and twenty-two defendants, um, three criminal, a hundred and fifty-six vehicle and traffic law cases, three civil cases, eighteen violations of village ordinances. The volume of work so far this year, many of you listened to me talk over the last couple of years about um, the volume of, of tickets, violations, some went down dramatically in the last two years. Well, they picked back up dramatically this year. Um, and there, I mean, certainly we had many more TCOs, which helps in the parking especially. Um, but all levels have picked up of activities, just based on the reports we're getting, uh, that I'm seeing through the justice court. Um, so for example, this year, the volume of violations is already totaling over nine thousand, which exceeds, and this is just through August, which is in excess of every prior year over the past decade. In just two-thirds of the year. Past decades, it's typically been between five and seven thousand. We're over, over nine thousand. Gross revenues are already over half a million dollars this year. Some of that, we're still waiting to see how much the state takes from us. Um, but that's, when you look at past years, that's about the average we've had for the last two years. Um, so I would expect we'd be back to the kind of two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-one levels, which were six to seven hundred thousand dollars of gross revenues um, a year, this year. I'll ship, again, um, I'll ship over the Mash Park. Thanks. I'll just move on. Um, they had a five K run this past weekend, this past Sunday, which happened to be Mrs. Russell Sage's birthday, Margaret Slocum. The follow-up one, the mayor said, um, the police department did another fantastic job in making sure the safety of all the participants. Was taken care of throughout. The fire department was also there, the ambulance corps. Um, the, I think we had about four hundred and fifty or more participants, of which over a hundred were children in the five K. It's the largest fundraiser for Mash Park, so um, an important event. Um, just want to thank the community and the volunteers for their support, their participation, um, to stage the event, to make sure the event was safe. Um, and again, especially the fire department and the police department, um, for making sure all the participants were safe throughout the event. Parks and open space and planning, we, um, in July of this year, um, we issued um, a request for qualifications for engineering and traffic consultants. Um, we received five responses. The responses came from LK McLean Associates, H two M Architects and Engineers, Hydeck Engineering, IMEG Consultants, which we know as Cameron Engineering, um, and D and B Engineering, I think they're Deverka and Bartolucci. So we didn't, this was not an RFP, this was an RFQ, request for qualifications. We've only received them last Thursday. Preliminary review of them is that, you know, we've had these, some of these firms have done work for the village in the past. Cameron is currently um, working on the Sag Harbor's wastewater system and has worked on it for ever, maybe?
Eight, six, seven years.
Yeah, okay. Um, Haydeck has considerable, considerable experience with Suffolk County Department of Public Works. Um, D and B, Deverka and Bartolucci, has done a lot of work at Sag Harbor, um, in their stormwater systems. They, they've done the, they did the initial assessment of the stormwater system, the GIS for the stormwater system decades ago, or a decade plus ago. Um, and LKMA has a lot of local experience with a lot of variety municipalities. The reason I'm talking about each one of them is because my hope is that we can talk about, um, with guidance from our counselor to qualify all five of them. We don't, we didn't ask them to bid on a specific project. We wanted to qualify them as consultants for the, for the village. For specific projects, we could try out different ones, because they all have a variety of skill sets that the village might find valuable for different projects at different times. So not tonight, but after this meeting, we'd like to talk about what's the process we should go through for trying to qualify for all of them, um, or several of them at least, and then what's the process we'd want to set up going forward to actually select them for specific projects, because there'd still be a review and bidding projects that we'd have to go through for that, but not the same cumbersome one we'd have to do if we did an RFP for every single project, if that makes sense. Yeah.
If you, if you chose one, would they do, wouldn't they still have to RFPs for the various projects individually?
If you chose, if we, well, we did, again, we did, this is a request for qualifications. So they've all shown us their qualifications.
And they're all qualified.
Yeah, they are all qualified, and some are qualified for, like, some laid out their surveying capabilities too, some didn't. Some laid out, all are qualified for engineering, for um, construction work. Um, some are stronger in water, some in wastewater. Um, they all have a variety of skill sets that they've laid out that are interesting.
As these projects come down the road, those people, once they're sort of pre-qualified, will be asked to give an RFP?
They'll be asked to bid, and maybe a couple of them will be asked to bid on specific projects, not just one.
Right.
And, you know, maybe we'll want to use one as a consulting firm as well to advise us on projects, and not on a specific project. So I'm hoping it gives us some flexibility in leveraging professional resources for the work that we see coming down the road and the work that we want to do. Um, no, no action items now, but I just wanted to lay that out as part of the review process. You know, D and B, I, I just want to say too, I said they had stormwater experience at Sag Harbor, and they're still currently doing stormwater work for East Hampton Town and Georgia Capon, Lake Montauk, um, and one other location as well. So they all have some specialties that we can, that we have as part of our, you know, wish list for capital projects down the road, and so it's nice to know that they've got background and records and information that we could use. With that, I'd like to turn it over to, um, to Drew Harvey, who's a member of the Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee. Um, he's got a, a request and a, and a brief discussion presentation for us. Not a PowerPoint, though.
Thank you, Drew.
A lot of it is, is the same material that you saw in January.
It's a great search, I read, but yeah, isn't that cool? It's an old, yeah, it's an oldie but a goodie.
So, uh, yeah, I'm here tonight, Drew Harvey, twenty-one seven, from, from, from Sag Harbor. And I'm here on behalf of the Parks and State Committee of the Village of Sag Harbor.
Excuse me, excuse me. Somebody talking on the back?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, so to, to follow up on trustee's Hayes introduction, uh, Parks and Open Space Committee is looking at the various village-owned properties, the open spaces in the, in the village, and trying to pinpoint projects that we can kind of take action on immediately. This, we feel like, is one of them. Um, there are seven water access points in the village. Um, they're actually public right-of-ways. These things exist right now. We're not asking for them to be created. Um, but these seven right-of-ways that terminate in the water are at risk of being lost to adjacent homeowners. So in the survey provided, or excuse me, the, something that just kind of gives you an example of two that have actually been lost, um, in my lifetime. Uh, they're, they're known for putting X there. This subdivision was provided by Nanagosi, who's been a longtime Sag Harbor village resident. Um, and it shows you that these things should not be taken for granted.
Which ones?
So the water access points, we're proposing to survey them, uh, and to mark them appropriately. It's something that other towns and municipalities do, and it's a, it is for the specific reason that adjacent homeowners cannot claim that nobody uses them, that no one maintains them, et cetera, and then eventually take them, uh, legally from the village.
Adversive possession, adverse possession?
Correct.
I'm curious if the village was notified when these two, like.
So, so it would definitely be my recommendation to maybe further investigate those two. What we're proposing is to kind of lock in on the ones that are still on the village's tax map, to survey them with, um, one of the firms that just got back to us with a request for qualification. And then we're proposing to mark them. If you look through the document here, I provided some reference images on what we're proposing. We were at the Harbor Committee just last week to show them what our thoughts were, make sure that it's, it's kind of in line with what's acceptable within the village. Um, it's also something that is certainly appealing. It looks good, and it will preserve the access for generations to come. We have some photos of the seven that are there, and then on that last page, you can see Shelter Island has a similar program. They're called town landings there. They actually have forty-seven marked and maintained water access points on that island. Sag Harbor, we're talking about seven. So I think it's.
Can I?
Yeah.
There may be more, and if we find more, because as we've gone through the work of the Park and Open Space Committee, we started compiling records of what are our park and open space, and as we keep going through the process, we keep finding more.
Right.
And we might find more here as well.
Liz, what records should exist for adverse possession, should the village have over the years?
You can't adversely possess municipal property.
From property?
Okay, well, that's.
But there is a case on a, on a beach ending that was highly litigious with the village, where the village lost a beach ending.
I remember, yeah.
I don't remember which beach.
That was a while ago.
But I think it was in Redwood.
It was one of those two edges. I think it was.
I'm looking at those, yeah.
I'm gonna guess, I'm gonna guess it was, yeah, it was Notre Dame, I think, pretty sure that was it.
Yeah.
There was extensive litigation, and the homeowner won, I think.
Was it, as you think?
It was Notre Dame.
I think it's one of them. I don't know which one. I'm sorry.
I'm pretty sure it was Notre Dame, yeah.
So they can win, and there was a formal process for doing it, officially declared.
I don't know what this, every case is different.
That was, that was a specific case where something happened. We just don't know.
I don't know the facts of that case.
How long?
Talking, ten years.
But we want to avoid them in the future and, and, and in a minimum maintain.
I remember it being discussed when I was chief of the fire department, sitting in the back. So you're talking, you know, close to ten years ago.
And it's possible the village gave its rights up.
Right.
It's possible how it happened. So we don't know. We'll look into it, but we don't want to give them up unknowingly, unwittingly. We want to protect our rights going forward.
A cautionary tip.
Yeah, so Parks and Open Space Committee is obviously interested in preserving open space in the village, keeping public access to the water, something that's also highlighted in the local waterfront utilization program. Something that was discussed in front of the Harbor Committee last week again. It's all in line with what Sag Harbor wants to do on paper, and now it's something we have to do in reality. Yeah, survey them, we have to mark them, um, and then we kind of go from there as far as meetings goes and what the village, um, wants to do at places like these in the future.
I think it's a great, great idea and really well executed. Really do. I love the, I love the post. Um, and I think we extended throughout the other waterways in the village, as you say.
I would say.
That we start to create more amenity.
What, uh, what do you need exactly from the board? You need all approval to go ahead with this project?
Yeah, so the main feedback is, is kind of on the posts that we're suggesting, something that you see on Block Island. It looks great. Um, we're, we're looking for the desire of the village to survey them, so that would require actually hiring a, a surveyor by the village. Um, and then to move forward with the installation of what's approved, um, in this factory. And we're prepared to, to see that through work and see that work through it and manage it for the village and report back to the Parks and Open Space Committee.
So this is just a presentation tonight on what's, what we would like to move forward on.
So we were here in January, so we kind of opened it up, got some public input. We're here now, kind of looking for the next step would be, uh, I assume a vote by the trustees.
Do we have any idea what the cost is to?
Not yet, so we have to look at, we just got the qualifications from surveying, so look at the cost of surveying. Uh, and then, and then the timeline and the marking for that too.
Yeah, let me talk to our grant writer to see if money might be available to cover some of these costs.
Yep.
I can just make a call on that, let you know.
And then once we get more information around the surveying, we can start the process.
Yeah, really all you have to do to maintain ownership is just either mow it or put up a sign or something, right?
Yeah, so the bare minimum is to mark it.
Right.
And to maintain the access, so somebody can physically walk down to the water. That's the.
And then been part of the subsequent steps is to figure out, how do you want to use these? What's the best way to use them? How they currently being used?
Yeah.
Are, are we, do we have access to all of the land that we're, that we own?
I was going to ask you, have any of these been assumed by adjacent homeowners over the years, or they're just over?
The two.
I know there's the two, but that they, we have lost, but are any of the others physically?
In part, potentially.
This is the thing. It's the same thing with the trails, the ocean access points. It's always in the interest of the adjacent homeowner to block access, tell people that nobody's using it, and then they actually start to maintain a part of it. And they can claim that the village doesn't want it, the village doesn't use it, and that's what we're trying to move with.
Okay, good. I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Drew.
Thank you.
Thanks, Drew.
That's the end of my reports.
Okay, thank you, deputy mayor. That brings us to trustee Corsh with Sewer Department, Village Grants, and the ZBA.
I'm gonna start with the Sewer Department, and the report through the month of August. Uh, total gallons received, three million five hundred and fifty-two thousand gallons in the month. Total gallons of sludge removed, forty-five thousand by Hampton Septic Services. DMOR reports forwarded on oh nine oh five. And Suffolk County DHS inspection, we can expect the next inspection, ten fifteen. As always, in New York State, DC inspection data is open. We had no complaints for the month of August. And the summary of operations, the wastewater treatment plant's running well, under all permitted levels. We're now operating four to five basins. Benson Contracting, we're out to replace air actuation valve and calibrate, and calibrated on basin number four. Um, that was on the sixteenth of August. Solar panels were installed, thanks to Mary Ann Eddy, who was followed through on that project. So we have solar panels on the roof of the sewage treatment plant, and they'll be contributing um, their energy to reduce. Sewage treatment plant is the biggest user of energy in the village by, by far. It's all pumps and, and, and air blowers. So at least we're doing what we can. We maximize the roof. It wasn't huge, but it was everything we could fit up there. Mary Ann Eddy took care of it all, and D Yardley, and I think it was, it's, and it also helped us in some of our, um, awards, other awards, to have this on the roof. So that's, it's, it's a wonderful thing. Um, standby generator was serviced on eight twenty, and we had a lateral repair, which is the pipe that will go from the street to, to a building at seventy-nine division, the Ace Hardware, on eight twenty-three. And the flow from July through August was an increase of a hundred and fifty-two thousand gallons. And I think over the summer this year, we, we treated over a million gallons more than we did last year, twenty twenty-three. Um, today was the day we got the bids, and we went out to bid for area K and L. And, uh, maybe not surprisingly, all the bids were a little more than we expected. Uh, some very much more than we expected. There was an enormous range in the pricing. We've taken the two lowest bids. Um, and I Meg, who, former camera, are now going through, they're huge, the bid documents, two hundred and fifty pages. So we're going through the responses, um, Mark Wagner and his team, and they're going to need about a week to go through. They'll, they'll reach out to the two, to respond these, the two lowest bidders. Um, make sure that they're fully qualified and they fully understood the parameters. And then we're going to have to regroup a little bit and see, maybe we could, you know, that there's an opportunity for value engineering. We have to raise some more money. Um, but it's not, you know, we don't have a green light yet, but we're certainly not going to fall at the first fence. This is, this is typical of these processes, of this process, and big municipal projects. So whereas we can't sort of say it's full steam ahead yet, um, we're still making forward progress, and I hope one month from now, we will have more detailed information. We literally opened them at two o'clock today. So they went over to Cameron. So I'll be sure if anyone wants to contact me over the next couple of weeks who's specifically interested, feel free. Otherwise, I'll be in a position to give you more details in October. Paid parking, I was just going to bring up to date on that. Receipts to date, net revenue so far is a hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars. Out of that, um, Long Wharf contributed a hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and eight. Havens Beach contributed three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars, thirty-eight cents, and the Gas Bowl lot contributed one, seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-six cents. I know there's been some issues with the Gas Bowl lot. It came in late in the summer. Um, but it seems to be working over there, and I do know that discretion is being used in enforcement so that we understand that there's confusion, and we understand that there's a need that may not have been met. Um, so this will all come to, all paid parking comes to an end on, uh, Columbus, October.
Well.
Yes.
October twelfth.
Yes, and so we'll have an opportunity then to regroup and plan for next year. Um, so bear with us, but so far we have a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars to, to spend on issues of transportation, easing transportation in town. I want to speak briefly and very briefly about the comprehensive plan. I know there's great interest in this. Uh, we do have a contract, uh, with New York State, so that part has been done. It took quite some time. And we're starting to work behind the scenes on form, on putting together the tools we require, um, to, to execute this, and I'm just going to read briefly the guidelines that we're following from New York State, so everybody has a broad uh, understanding of what we're, of what the requirements of the state are, and, and we are spending their money, so it's only fair that they get to to weigh in on this. So we need to establish a comprehensive planning committee as a special municipal board, if applicable, to conduct overseen the development of the comprehensive plan in cooperation with municipal officials, other municipal boards, and the project consultants, if applicable. The comprehensive planning committee shall have at least, and, um, there's emphasis here from the state of New York in this, at least one member from the planning board, and shall include representatives from a large range of ethnic, social, and cultural backgrounds, and a diverse range of stakeholders such as residents, civic leaders, business owners, elected officials, environmental experts, municipal boards, and municipal board members. The members of the comprehensive planning committee, known as the CPC, uh, will conduct oversee the planning process and the development of the comprehensive plan, participate in meetings, generate ideas and build consensus, provide the consultant team with the relevant information reflective of the community's current condition and needs, including a list of completed and ongoing local planning efforts and initiatives. Review materials drafted by the consultant firm and provide constructive feedback, support each of the proposed public participation and outreach efforts, and set the stage for cooperation and the plan's implementation. This is very much your plan. You know, we want to have as much, um, participation as possible, and we're trying to design the architecture to allow, it will be great, there'll be big public meetings that'll be wide open to the entire village, where ideas will be, will be, will be teased out and, and distilled, and that's where we'll, we use the help of the consultant. We have to initiate an RFP for that consultant, so this is a long process. New York State gives us five years to do it. We hope to have it done in two. So I just want to sort of set those boundaries, so everybody knows what to expect. And as we move ahead through the next couple of months, we'll be discussing behind the scenes as to, like, on a one-on-one, as to how to wrangle this, looking at, you know, the, the examples of other villages. Town, Village of Southampton has a pretty good plan, which I read, and I read a bunch of other ones. And we're very unique, like, there's not any other, any other plan you could take and sort of say, oh, that's a great idea for us. We're Sag Harbor. I think we have unique challenges, and we have unique advantages. And I think we are, we the residents, and, and even the people surrounding the village who are not resident here, but consider the village as a really big part of their, of their life and their community, are, we are sort of best placed, and we have the best understanding of where our village is and where we might like to see it in the future. So I hope to keep bringing you up to date as time goes by, but that's where we are now. It's going on behind the scenes, and, you know, we'll see what, you know, where we end up in November, December. Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome. That brings us to trustee Plum with Public Works, Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, over one thousand two hundred linear feet of sidewalk have replaced. It was a lot. Uh, a total of six thousand square feet of sidewalk have been poured. Same thing with the installation for ADA compliant handicap ramps. That includes the stretch on Jermaine. Same thing with the installation for ADA compliant handicap ramps. That includes the stretch on Jermaine, which is long overdue. Uh, two new catch basins were installed, one on Bay Street, the second at Redwood. Millian and Haven of Union, Henry Williams, Jefferson, Eastville Avenue, Rose and Meadow Streets have convinced. That's where the oil and tar, uh, oil and stone roads. Uh, Saint Benwell and some resurfacing in Sag Harbor Hills commenced. Beach Avenue, Harbor Avenue, Hillside Drive, East and West, like, will be completed this week. Uh, the highway department assisted with traffic management during this, uh, various work. Uh, they've continued to patch and repair roads throughout the village. Road shoulders have been repaired as needed after the heavy rainfalls we've seen. Painting of crosswalks, stop lines continues. Watermelon flower baskets continues daily on Main Street. Cutting grass along park areas, Havens Beach, road shoulders and parking lots continues weekly. Rubbage picketers have been picked up twice daily on Main Street due to heavy usage. Maintaining graded public easement points in Redwood, which is interesting because we were just talking about that. Um, monitor intended drainage basins during the recent heavy rainfalls. Couple of street signs had to be complete, uh, a couple got knocked down by trucks and gardener people. Uh, following a fire department carnival, a beach rake was deployed to have a sweet clean shoreline. And the continued tree trimming, particularly on sidewalks, continues, um, to maintain clear pathways. Uh, as far as the, uh, HP ARB goes, I've been meeting with Steve Williams, the chair, to try to remind them of the guidelines and the, um, issues or the factors they're allowed to take into out in their decisions. It seems like they've gotten a little bit, and I know, um, where Liz has tried. But, um, it's, they, 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 we clarified, made clear to them that they are allowed to, for instance, object to the size, they're allowed to, for instance, object to its context in the neighborhood. Those are allowable. There've been implications to some attorneys that that's not, but it's in the code and it's allowed. And furthermore, and this is, this is something I didn't know, is because there's separate jurisdictions, the HP ARB can override the ZBA. And that's something, and, and even on.
Not, not overrule it. It's not a pellet. There's separate jurisdictions. So one board can approve it and another board can deny it, and then they stand separate. They don't, they're not appellate review or.
Right, bottom line is, there's no permit issue, correct?
Well, ultimately what happened if a board, any land use review board that's required for approval to get a building permit denies an application, then the building permit would not issue.
Right, so that's the idea. Just trying to take the fear factor out of that from that board a little bit. That, you know, they are allowed to do, express their opinions and, um, uh, and that, so, and then these, uh, Environmental Action Committee. Those, those big beach lines that we ordered a while back are on their way finally. They're going to be put up and, Marion, you can tell, you do your report, you can tell me where we're going to put them, because I don't remember. Compost, eight hundred fifty pounds so far this, uh, season, but trying to break a thousand pounds, uh, diverted food scraps. Um, so that will, that's, they're looking for a, uh, winter home for that, for the collection point, so that they can continue doing it. Now, it's great, why, you know, it's recycling the, the food. Um, you can give the tree preservation update yourself, because I don't, I don't see it in here. And this, as we, as Aiden said, the solar panels have been installed. And we're just waiting for the final step, which is the PTO or Permit to Operate, which is, they send an inspector out and looks at it and says, okay, turn it on. And that's my report.
Thank you, Trustee Plum. That brings us to Trustee Kane with the Building Department, Harbor and Docks and the Harbor Committee.
Good evening, um, so I'll start with the Building Department. Uh, for the month of August, there were three building permits that were issued. That's a total of fifty-nine for the year. On the rental permit side, there were seven for August, which brings us up to a total of a hundred and twenty-eight. So given this was the first year we've done the rental permits, uh, it shows that it's been a success. And then the newer version, which is the owner occupied, um, rental agreement, which were the rental permit, excuse me. Um, we had one for August, so that brings us up to a total of four. And just for people to know, that really was approved, uh, in July. So, um, this is a new process and, you know, the goal here is for, for people who do rent their homes. We want to make sure there's all the safety issues are hit and that everyone is taking that responsibility. So, um, it's, you know, it's been a nice success. For inspections, there were sixty-three, certificate of occupancies, eighteen, notices of violation were eighteen. Um, of the inspections that were done, uh, the majority did pass. There were six that failed. For the, on the revenue side, uh, for the month of August, it was seventy-three thousand odd. That brings us up to a total of sixty-nine to six hundred ninety-two, eight hundred and sixty thousand. Um, on the pace to pre, to compare it to last year, so we do a year-to-date, um, we're running about thirty-six percent ahead of last year, um, on a year-to-date basis. We'll have to see what happens in the final months of the year. That just gives you an idea of where we are. And on the Harbor Committee, um, on September fifth, which was the same day as their monthly meeting, prior to the monthly meeting, we, um, held a session, uh, really to review the current code and to look for areas that might need clarification or might, uh, end up that the Harbor Committee would make some recommendations to the board to make some changes to the code. Uh, you know, as we know, we have the code. Sometimes we need clarity, sometimes things evolve, so we'll look to that. That was a, not quite a two-hour session, but it was one that we really only covered about a third of the material that Nelson Popin Vorjes, um, who is our consultant and the environmental consultant, who really do a lot of work with the board, um, whether it's reviewing the applications, which are, which is an essential part of what they do and work very closely with the board. So this was one of what might be at least two and possibly three work sessions um, that the committee is, um, Harbor Committee is hosting. So, um, just will keep you posted as that continues and, and what the outcome of that. But it was a very productive meeting, I would say. Um, and then, uh, for the monthly report for the Harbor Committee, um, continued to see a very active month, uh, in August. Um, there were, you know, whether it's looking at seeing how extremely busy the docks were. There were several incidents that happened. There were five that I'll just review very quickly. And on August seventh, um, at the end of the day, Harbor Master Borey, uh, responded to a call that there were two individuals, uh, that were out on jet skis. They were blown off course. The jet ski was disabled. They ended up, uh, hitting the breakwater and, um, he went out, uh, got them onto the patrol boat, towed in the jet. And unfortunately, um, no one was hurt. Obviously, the jet ski has to be repaired, but no individuals were hurt. On August ninth, again, Harbor Master Borey went and assisted. Um, Southampton had given him a call that, um, there were two kayakers that were in distress uh, out in Noyak Bay. We were able to bring them in, bring in their kayak. And these are the kind of things that are, you know, going on more frequently than we would, we'd hope for. On August eighteenth, there were three individuals, um, there, another overturned kayak. Um, fortunately, no medical treatment was needed, um, and they refused much more assistance after being towed in. On August twenty-fifth, Harbor Master Durier responded to a call of a vessel that struck a rock, um, out in the main channel. Again, no injuries, um, they were brought into the inner mooring field. And last, um, a little bit after eleven o'clock at night, and this is what the mayor had referred to, um, a yacht in Sa- Sag Harbor Yacht Club, um, there was a fire on the boat. Combination of, um, Harbor Masters as well as the Fire Department responding very quickly. They were there within minutes, um, they were able to extinguish the fire. And, and this is, um, a really good point that, the good thing is this yacht did have the proper, um, you know, the fire extinguisher and all what's needed on the boat to take care of the fire very quickly. It didn't, no one was hurt, um, it ended up being minor. But this is just a good reminder for all boat owners and vessel owners that they have all the proper equipment onboard so that things won't escalate and, um, get out of control. So, um, you know, that, that's the takeaway really on that. As well as the quick response by the Fire Department and the Harbor Committee, or the Harbor, not Harbor Committee, the Harbor Masters. Um, for the transient dock, it was full most of the entire month of August. And reservations continue to be strong even going into September. Um, in the outer mooring field, twenty-eight vessels were checked. The average number, because we continue to be monitoring this on a daily basis, the average number of vessels that are in the outer mooring area were thirty-three for the month. Um, on the private moorings, it was two point eight. You know, that's just the average, so it's, it's either two or it's three, but you get the point. Um, and then for the boats that were anchored, it's a little bit over ten that were anchored for the month of August. On the inner mooring area, the, the dock personnel are checking the boats on a daily basis. On the marine sanitary device inspections, um, combination of our Harbor Masters, Borey and Durier, worked with Southampton Town Marine Patrol Officers and did inspections, um, for the month. We did, um, ten inspections and we are now up to a total of a hundred and seven for the year. There were no violations for the month of August. On the pump out boat, which we, uh, mentioned last month, that we continue to see an increase there. There was a total of eighty-four thousand, um, gallons that were pumped out, the marine waste. Um, that brings us up to a total of two hundred and thirty, nine hundred and four, forty gallons through August thirty-first. That's an increase of twenty-seven percent versus two thousand and twenty-three. Um, so we continue to be very active, um, and on pace, the revenue is running um, above last year's. And we'll give you those exact numbers in the end of September. And that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Kane. I need a motion to accept the department reports.
I'm with it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. That brings us, brings us, excuse me, to the public comments portion of the meeting, which is fifteen minutes of a public session. Input for comments and questions, limit three minutes per speaker concerning the treasurer's report or department reports. I just wanted to comment before anybody else does. We spoke about solar panels and them being installed on the sewer treatment plant. I've been, uh, corresponding with council and with our consultants. And I don't know if you had shared the information with the board yet, but we're looking at putting together um, a resolution to, uh, give the ARB and the ZBA some flexibility when it comes to the installation of solar panels.
I, I sent, I sent the board with a bunch of standards to look at.
Yeah, so it's something that I'd like the trustees to take a look at, to give input. So that we can see if we can have some flexibility as far as homeowners in the village doing solar, solar panels. Because right now, I think the current code that we have is very restrictive.
Do we have to maintain compliance with the sta- the federal standards for?
That's one of the standards.
Right.
You did, okay.
Solar panels are still not allowed on contributing buildings, correct?
So just as you said, Bob, the ARB has that, you know, they, they can say, no, we don't want it here. You know, they don't, it's, they're not, it's not something that's going to tie their hands. It's giving them some flexibility.
Yeah.
So they can, you know, instead of it being so, so stringent, just, I just want to make that comment. Yeah. So does anybody like to come up and speak? Mary Ann?
I just have, Mary Ann at eight, ninety-six Hampton Street. I just have two questions. One, um, you were talking about the harbor. Um, I've forgotten one of them. That's a very interesting point the mayor just made. But I had heard that there was another boat that broke loose. Um, and I'm just wondering if you have any details on that, that broke loose in its mooring in the last month?
There was one that did, that was the end of, uh.
Not the one that ended up in the eel grass, a month or so ago, but one subsequent to that.
Yep, and, you know, the, and I'm sorry, I didn't, there was no issue that happened because of the, they, we are talking with the owners of the mooring to, you know, be more on top of that. And so we are following up on that.
Okay, and I can't remember the second part, so I guess it goes away. Thank you.
Just one other thing. I don't know if it was mentioned, but we did do the oyster bed seeding at Steinbeck Park. Cornell Cooperative, Back to the Bays. We did, there is now, we have started an oyster reef off the end of Steinbeck Park, so, and I actually was able to throw the first bucket out there. But we also have the South Fork Sea Farmers that are supposed to be working on a project we approved off the Breakwater.
Yes.
And we need to get an update on that. Mary Ann?
Um, I'm not really the one to talk about it, because I'm not directly involved. But I did follow up and ask somebody where we were with that.
Right.
And they said that actually the DEC said that they couldn't do it there because it was too close to the sewage treatment plant. So they're going to move that site further east.
Right, I spoke to.
Exactly where it is, but it's not going to be on the Breakwater.
I actually spoke to Harbor Master Borey about that. So he said that they were moving the site, but where they are as far as getting this done?
Well, it's probably not going in this fall. I don't know.
So they're down with Breakwater?
No, they're going to go further than the Breakwater because the Breakwater in the DEC world is too close to the sewage treatment plant.
Yeah.
Even though we have great testing results, they, they don't even listen to that. It's just sewage treatment plant, you have to be a certain distance away. So that's it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Anybody else? John Parker had his hand up.
John Parker, thirty-three Shaw Road. I- in regards to the, the spaces plan and the, and the road ends, uh, mostly in Redwood. Uh, I'm totally in favor of, of what is being said so far in terms of preserving them, um, and surveying them, et cetera. Uh, my concern is, however, that most of those road ends have stormwater issues. Um, there were some cures for those that were proposed several years ago. Rain gardens, et cetera, which have, in most cases, not been implemented. Uh, one was implemented and then part filled in. Um, I think this is an opportunity, if we're surveying those, those road ends uh, and considering increasing the recreational activity, to also go back and look at the problems from, from stormwater, combine that, do the two things at the same time. Uh, i- if you mark them, publicize them as, as being recreational access points, they're going to help more use. And that could exacerbate the problem, that more cars parking, you know, et cetera. Uh, the second part of it is, is that there is some concern of, of, of residents who've heard about this. I talked to Redwood residents, you know, over the weekend, actually showed them the proposal that had been made before the Harbor Committee. Uh, and, and they were concerned, uh, uh, about unrestricted, you know, access. Uh, I, I, I know that in most places, in the towns, villages, um, access points, road ends have some restrictions. They're either restricted to, by, by residents or they're restricted by no parking signs. Um, and I've, in the last two days, I've been to several in Shelter Island, East Hampton Town, South Hampton Town. Uh, and I'm just suggesting that we look at the same time. In other words, instead of being, uh, retroactive after there's a problem, uh, that, that we look at it from the beginning of, from, as to the issue of whether there needs to be some kind of restrictions on those, so.
Thank you. If you remember, John, when this first came up, the first thing I said was about the stormwater and doing some mitigation. I don't know if those of you who are here at that.
Yeah.
Presentation. So it's something that we're definitely going to be looking at.
I understand, I, I, I'm just, I'm just suggesting that that's a good opportunity.
Absolutely.
To, to.
You can see it in the photographs, if you look, that there's, there's, there's going to be issues. But the first step, I think, is making sure we mark them, so we don't lose them.
Maybe like a parking sticker, that what you're talking about, like a village?
Well, is it going to be restricted to residents or, 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 or not? I mean, most, again, again, in most of the towns and villages, those access points are restricted to residents or people who get a, you know, who get a, get a sticker. Um, I mean, just as Havens Beach is, you know, is restricted, you know. Um, I mean, just as Havens Beach is, you know, is restricted, you know, for opening up other access points, you know, should, should, I'm just raising the question.
Right.
You know, should there be restrictions? I'm suggesting that we look at that in advance and not wait until after there's a, you know, there's a problem.
Right. Thank you.
And happy to work with you on the storm water. I mean, it's been 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 there for a long time and for various reasons haven't gotten done and that. Need to get something done.
Thank you.
Anne, I think Anne, I I'll get to you, Mr. Martin. But I believe Anne Hansen had her hand up first.
Anne Hansen, one fifty one Bay Street, St. Harbor. I guess I, uh, you you've got my letter in regard to the stop signs.
We, uh, if I could just stop you there, Anne, this is, these comments are for the reports that we just gave. The stop sign issue, it's a local law.
It's coming up.
There's to be a public hearing. It's actually the next thing to come up. So if you could just hang in there for a second. And then this way your, this way your comments are on the record for that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else with any comments on the reports that I just gave? Mr. Shadrick. You want to tell all these people who you are, where you live, just so they know?
Dan Shadrick, amazing Dan Shadrick.
He's one of the amazing.
Forty two remains here in the same. I just want to congratulate the leadership of the mayor and the trustees and members of the board. Uh, this is an incredible village. I've lived here for two years before that. I've lived forever, more years than I want to remember. We're champions. So you're really doing a fabulous job. Uh, I didn't really know what was on the agenda tonight, but I saw that to see what was going on. And one of the things that that, uh, I guess, Aiden, that you, uh, that you did, that give the report on what's going on at the waste management?
Yes.
It's like I came in late, apologized for that. But uh, that smell, that odor was emanating from that area for a couple of weeks. I'm over there every day.
Yeah.
Uh, exercising, uh, trying to get a good hamburger at the the village bar, whatever it's called. Shangol and over to the, uh, at the Core Maria, et cetera. So uh, it it must be really irritating a lot of the residents as well as the the people who own the retail businesses there. So I'm wondering why that happened and since it did happen, hadn't for a period of time. Why wasn't it projected, anticipated in advance? Do we have the enough power, whatever it is? You know, we have the the right, the correct ability to to eliminate that sort of an issue?
We have two tanks there that, um, when certain operations take place, that, which is removing sludge. In my report, you hear, you've heard that there was, I don't know how many thousands of gallons of sludge removed. Those tanks have covers and they have carbon filters on them. When the trucks come in to remove them, which you'd like to do early in the morning, I'm not sure what time of the day you were there. Um, but sometimes it has to be done later in the day. With all of the technology and all of the scrubbers we have there, an empty truck arrives that's used to to move sewage, sludge. So as it's being filled, the air inside that truck and that tank has to be expelled. And that can cause a malodorous environment to, to put it, to put it politely. It is a sewage treatment plant and there are, it's not going to be like a a a field of of buttercups. It, there is going to be some smell attached to it. We do everything possible to mitigate that. Um, we have no, I understand that you have, you know, you've experienced some sort of, some sort of issue down there from your report. But it's really handy for us when that happens. If someone can call it in at what time, then we'll know what process was undertaken.
Really have an issue. I'm just wondering why it exists. Like, for example, if you or the mayor, uh, Mr. Hay, uh, ran the tavern there. And you're, you know, promoting their customers to commit and spend more than I earn a day. Uh, you know, hamburger, beer, a couple of glasses of wine, and all of a sudden this laugh, the load comes in. I mean, hello. I mean, I think, in my view, and I'm not a lawyer, that you have a big legal uh issue here. Because, you know, the the restaurant, for example, rents that space in the VFW.
Mm hmm.
You know, the the building next door is a three story brick building.
Yep.
I mean, I I don't know the responsibility that the village has to the residents and and the the retail people in that, in that area.
Well, I think we have a responsibility, if you wanted to speak legally about this, and I will defer to council, but we operate under very strict rules. Uh, from the DEC, we're inspected by the DEC, all the outflows inspected. The plant was built, I'm not going to deny the plant could use some upgrading to more modern technology. But after today's opening of bids to connect more uh homes to the plant, the amount of money that we will need will be more. Eye watering than the aroma that you experience. The plant could be upgraded from its its current, um, its current operations to a membrane system, which would be more sealed. But we're talking probably in the regions twenty, thirty, forty million dollars to do that in the five tanks. We just don't have that money. The plant works very well and it it cleans so much of the outflow from the village. We wouldn't, one of the reasons that the village of St. Harbor is so prosperous compared to, and we have bars and restaurants and we have heavy use. And including the restaurant you just mentioned, they're all connected to the plant and they all use the plant to maintain their business. So without the plant, none of these, none of, most of these industries or most of the, most of our tourist business wouldn't exist. We would not be able to handle the outflow. A lot of these, a lot of these businesses, especially down among Island Avenue, they're, the water table is so high. That they would not be able to operate with any sort of outflow septic tanks. And they're not really in a position to be able to install an IA system. It's sort of like everything in life. It's a compromise. One of the issues are, is when we pump these trucks. And the air, the foul air inside the truck is emitted. That also happens when we pump out, where the pump out boat for the yachts is the tank for that is right in the middle of Marine Park, close to the water. When that lid, I don't know, it's a five thousand gallon tank. So when that lid is lifted and we pump out. Um, then again, that truck is going to expel. As the truck fills, uh, the air inside the truck is expelled. And it's pretty foul. I won't deny that. We do everything we can.
Depends which way the wind's blowing.
And depends which way the wind is blowing and what the temperature is. I mean, I understand, I mean, we're not unaware of this. We do every, the plant's been there since nineteen seventy. Um, it serves the village well and protects the waterfront in a manner that no other septic system, IA system or any other system in the village can do. Dr. Gobler from Stony Brook raves about the outflow and the low level of nitrogen and coliforms that leave that plant. Is there a smell? There is. I'm not going to deny that. But to date, we haven't had an official complaint from that restaurant that you mentioned. And we never had one from the previous owners of that restaurant when it was the dock side.
It's the three restaurants also to the west. I mean, they're not, it's not.
No, I know, I understand. The air moves around. I I I'm not sure what answer I can give you other than to express our acknowledgement that, yes. That it's a sewage treatment plant and yes, it is a malodorous industry. And we do everything that we can to mitigate that. We have put lids on the, these two sludge tanks in the last two or three years. Um, and we use, try and use a negative pressure system so that all the outflow goes through a charcoal filter. Um, I'm afraid I can't make like wave magic wand.
Perfectly clear. So it costs about forty.
Well, when there's, yeah, it would be in the regions of that.
How are we going to get the money, the forty million?
Well, I've been working hard for the last six years raising grant money. I've managed to get about twelve million so far to connect more homes to protect the water that we all enjoy.
Well, if I can help in any way.
You bring your checkbook?
What's that?
Did you bring your checkbook?
I don't, well, I put the checkbook. Trust me, I don't have about four.
Listen, I understand. And we're, you know, the village and I think everybody on this board, and there's lots of other people out there who work. Very, very hard to try and fix these issues. We inherited a plant that was built in the nineteen seventies and I'll tell you, we're really lucky to have it. You go talk to East Hampton, Southampton, or any of the other villages would love to have a sewage treatment plant. And to your point, the hardest issue that they have is where to locate it. Everybody wants it as long as it's somewhere else.
I would say, yeah, what I would say to your comment, Mr. Shadrick, on this issue, is I've gotten a lot of complaints personally. I got it. Yes. And I think that we're in the process of hooking up more, well, actually, a lot of residents. To the plant and expanding the plant. So I think that we should look into the, see if there's a technology out there. Find out exactly how much it costs and if it's feasible to apply at the plant.
It's brilliant.
I mean, I think that that's something that we should definitely look into. And I think I've had conversations with Trustee Kors on this and he agrees. So.
You're all doing a great job, by the way. I'm so proud of you.
If you're willing to pay for it, you can put your name on it, by the way.
Be the Cedric, the brilliant Cedric plant.
Amazing.
The amazing Cedric. The ama- the amazing sewage plant. It would be great. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Thanks very much.
I believe we have, uh, Mr. Martin, Kevin, you want to come forward?
I'm addressing the stop sign issue.
Okay, anybody else that wants to comment on the reports? Yes.
Just on this harbor market, that's so many mornings, but they do it a lot.
Okay.
They smell that. We smell it over there.
What time, what, what time is that around, do you think?
Nine, eight, nine, ten in the morning.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, that ends the public comment section. We have no introduction of any local laws. That brings us to a public hearing. A local law amending Village Code two sixty five dash four, stop intersection to amending Village Code two sixty four. Excuse me, two sixty five dash four. Stop intersection to add stop signs on Bay Street at the northwest and southeast corners of Havens Beach entrance. So I have a motion to open public hearing.
I'm moving.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane. Uh, that opens the public hearing.
Aye.
Okay, everybody in favor?
Yep.
Anybody opposed? Public hearing is now open. That brings us to public comments. Anne, did you want to speak first?
Anne Hansen, one fifty one Bay Street, St. Harbor. Now, you got my letter, did you?
Yep, yes.
Unfortunately, you have stop signs about a block away. Now, nine times out of ten, they don't stop. They slow down. Uh, Robert Farrell on the corner, he says it's terrible. And once they make that corner, they go like about a H E W, they do go fast. Um, I've got a, I have a comment from, I think ET Williams also spoke to you about the heavy, the traffic being so fast. Coming down of one fourteen onto Hempstead. Also Roman Roth and his wife. They, they said it's really, really bad. I think the best way, and I don't know if you agree with this. If the police cars could park on Havens Beach Road between Nancy DeCassio, well, DeCassio House and myself. Have the police car parked there. And when these guys go by, go out and get them, give them a warning. They probably can't give a ticket. I I'm not sure, but they could at least give a warning. Also Bridges Drive across from ET News, and I spoke to him about that. And he thought that was a very good idea to put a police car there. Now, if people are driving down off one fourteen Hempstead and Bay, if they get used to the fact these cop cars are going to be there. They might slow down. They should. They really should. I know it's bad. I know it's bad.
Thank you.
That that would be the best thing. Uh, unfortunately, uh, the the signs are ignored. It's 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 a shame, really. They go so fast. And I don't know if you think that's a good idea to uh do something about the the speed limit, you know.
I think that, yeah, I think that our police officers are enforcing the speed. I mean, we have two officers, two squad cars on at a time on any shift. And in the summertime, things get extremely busy. And sometimes, you know, you're not, we're not going to catch everybody.
I know.
But there are, you know, there have been police, a police presence. I live on forty two Hempstead Street. You know where I live, over right next to Bob Farrell. So I know what goes on there. And there have been police officers patrolling that area. I'd have to look at the records and see exactly how many tickets have been given. The purpose of this, to adopt this law, was for the, the, we have, you know, sometimes small fam- or young families. We have people on bicycles, people walking their dogs, going in and out of Havens Beach, as you see, Anne. There's a lot of activity there. And there's only the one stop sign for traffic coming out of Havens Beach. There's no controls on either end of the entrance to the, to the beach. So what this would do is give us a little bit more control. I I do agree that there are times when people are going to run stop signs. It's just human nature. But for the most part, I don't agree with, sorry, but I don't agree with Bob that they're just ignoring it. They are stopping at that stop sign on Hempstead Street.
You know, like not stop.
I would say there's more people stopping than are, than are not. It's a control. It's something that's there.
Even a rolling stop is better than nothing. And Hempstead had no stops.
Park a police car there without an officer.
Just so that it's.
At times, so they have a visible.
There is, there is a permanent uh speed sign there, as you know.
Yes.
That registers and and warns people. But the whole purpose of putting this law forward is, as I said, to give some protection to residents. And individuals that are going in and out of the beach to give some control to the vehicles that are, that are coming either end of Bay Street. So that was the purpose of putting this forward.
Well, the police car does uh park down in front of Core Maria.
Mm hmm.
Now, our car coming down the street naturally, they better slow down because they see the police car there. So.
I think, yeah, and I I believe that this will be part of the comprehensive plan study. Traffic calming and traffic in general, because this is not the only place that people speed. People feel differently about uh speed bumps. Uh, Bay Street is a perfect example where if you put a double line down the road and brought um bike lanes, painted bike lanes. And shrink the width of very, very wide road. It's been said that people will go as fast as they feel comfortable going. They think it's safe. If they feel like it's narrowed down, they slow down because they don't want to crash their car.
Yeah, no, they're interesting. On that note, Bob, that I noticed that in the summertime. A lot of people have been taking advantage of Bay Street as far as parking. I don't know if you've seen it.
Yeah, that's good, right?
Right, they've been using both sides of the street.
Mm hmm.
Pretty much, yeah, narrows it and that somewhat.
More demarcation and squeeze travel lanes down.
It's very broad.
But that's just one, one tactic that that people use. It's traffic calming. And and the other problem with stop signs is they're a little bit noisy. If people pull up, stop and roar off. Side effect, but you know, it does, it is a, it is as well. And by the way, what happened to the parking problem? It's not up there anymore. I mean, after the summer.
Well, that's what works. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me thank you also for the amount of that heavy traffic that's, uh, it really has slowed down a lot. It's it's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Anne. Kevin? Jeff? Kevin. Got Kevin on my mind. I was going to call you Aggie, but then they would all look at me like, everybody in the fire department has a, has a nickname.
My husband Jeffrey Norman, I live at one thirty Bay Street, um, diagonally across from Anne here. And I would just like to say that I agree with Anne as far as not having a stop sign. Um, I feel that the traffic. Does move when there isn't a stop sign. And being a first responder, trying to get to calls, trying to do things like Mr. Gardella, Mr. Farrell at the end of the street. Howie Clark Smith across the street from me. My thought is with the parking that is now being doubled up on the street. It's almost making it in down to a one lane road. Now, how fast can you go on a one lane road? You can't go very fast. You put a stop sign there, it's going to bottom everything up. It's going to make that one lane a half a lane. Because the cars are going to stretch all the way around the corners like they do in these other villages. When that happens, you have helicopter landings, you have fire trucks that need to get down there. People are going to pass other people waiting in line for the stop. They're just going to say, you know what, this guy stopped at the stop sign, I'll just go around him. And when that happens, we're going to have a bigger problem than we got now. That's just my opinion. Um, I also know Rob Tia Griggs is going to try to get online and talk about the same thing. She's against a stop sign as well. Um, but thank you for your time, for hearing me out. And I want to congratulate all of you on keeping the water safe. You're, you're doing a phenomenal job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The thing we're looking at, at East Hampton villages as well, are the speed cameras that get tickets. And there's, there's a bunch of.
Correct, agreed.
There, there has, there has to be legislation at the state level. And then we have to have a minister of judge here to give those tickets out, but that is out there. And for not just us, but other villages.
There's a lot, there's a lot to that, though.
Yeah, there is.
There's, there's, there's a big cost to that.
Yes.
That's comprehensive plan discussion.
Yes, yes, okay.
Anybody, do you have somebody on Zoom?
Uh, maybe Grace.
We have somebody in the audience, too. I'd like to get to the person in the audience first. You want to come forward?
Hi, I'm Anne Brown. I live on one forty Bay Street. And I don't agree on that stop sign either. I think it's going to be a really, like a jammed. You know, we know how the street have looked this summer. And going, you know, um, going southeast is going to be the, coming from the town. It's going to be the first stop that these people are going to make. And they're already.
And they already have a really high speed coming down. And it's just gonna be a lot of jamming on the brakes over there. Um, so I, I would suggest, you know, if, if stop signs is the only way to do it, they need to be more, there should be one maybe by high street intersection. So they keep the lower speed all the way, and so it's not just suddenly a stop sign by Haven's Beach, because they're coming like thirty-five, forty miles an hour till they hit that stop sign, and I'm sure a lot of people are just gonna go right through it. So I, I don't think a stop sign there makes a lot of sense. And like everybody said, there's so many cars. I mean, I walk my dogs daily. And I have the big round cars, you know, and, and one place that's really rough is the curb there with those big trees that they planted, so they can't see anything. They can't see you coming there. I go up on the lawn in, in that person's garden, in the trees, because they, they just can't see. So I think that by the time they get to that intersection, they have such a high speed. I, I, you know, I think, I, I just don't believe that a, a stop sign there would help very much.
So I did, yeah, just so you know, I did have code enforcement make sure that those hedges were up to code and didn't need to be cut back, or there was no action.
Cut them back?
No, well, there's no action that the village can take at this time, because it's on his property. And he's not violating any code as we see.
It's scary.
It is.
It's really scary. Because they, I mean, I'm, it's, uh, I, I understand, you know, I just, uh, but a stop sign there would, I, I think that would not be beneficial for anybody that lives there.
We have other people who are gonna comment, too.
Okay, so that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so, two things. One is, I talked earlier about the RFQs for, for the engineer consultants that we'd like to qualify. We don't plan to do that till next month. Tomorrow, um, that Parks and Open Space Committee is also meeting with the Department of Public Works about their construction project on the Bridgehampton Sag Harbor Turnpike in the intersection of Jermaine Avenue. Um, we're gonna understand who their traffic consultants are. We don't wanna select the same one, obviously, that they're using. Maybe whoever we select is a good traffic consultant, can look at Bay Street as well. Because there might be other alternatives. I'll wanna suggest that Hempstead Bay Street run. We can have them focus on those two rather than just, uh, as their first priorities, maybe, whoever we kind of look to for that.
Yeah, I mean, that's good, but we also need an overarching.
Yeah, it's gonna, yeah.
I, I still, I wanna hear from the rest of the public and what their comments are. Uh, I, I'm gonna go to Zoom and, and then I'll, I'll get to you, okay? Mrs. Plum? Give me one second, Kate.
Oh, do I have to do video? Hi.
Hi.
Um, my name's Phoebe Briggs. I, um, live next to Jeff and Lotta with my mother, Roxanne Briggs, at one thirty-six Bay Street. Um, I'll keep it brief because I think a lot's been said already, but we also oppose the stop sign. Um, I'm just not certain, in my opinion, that we've necessarily looked at the impact also of what the current speed cameras are doing or the signs. Um, it just feels a little hasty to add another stop sign when we've already added the one at Hempstead and Bay Street, and um, I know that we've talked about police cars. I personally haven't seen police cars, other than maybe closer to High Street on occasion, um. But, you know, if you look at what East Hampton Village has done on, like, Dune Mirror Lane, and how they have police cars there on, on a relatively frequent basis, I think it's really made an impact on something like that, on a street that's relatively similar um, as far as where traffic flows into town. Um, so I think my family and I would feel very uh, hopeful if, uh, more of a traffic study were done rather than just throwing a stop sign in rather haphazardly.
Anybody else on Zoom?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kate?
Um, Kate, um, would you start? I drive there all the time, and I think, you know, which is very, uh, it's very important that you put a stop sign there, because, um, the people, the kids, the dogs, coming out of Haven's Beach, and if those people are speeding down, or at least they do, it is, it's really, I've thought that myself. People have to cross, they're always crossing the road there from Haven's Beach. It's a bit dangerous little, uh, intersection there, and I think the village shouldn't put a stop sign in there, but you can try it out, try it out for a year, but you get a stop sign, put it down, put it back, if it doesn't work, but I think it's very important for the safety of the people using Haven's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? What I'd like to do, if this is possible, counsel, is keep this public hearing open
Sure.
for one more month and not take any action on this.
Adjourn the public hearing.
Well, just adjourn that. I'd like to hear from some more of the neighbors in the area. And, uh, see where we're, this traffic consultant, have them take a look at it also, so I think we're just gonna hold it over.
Do we need a motion for that?
Have a motion to adjourn the public hearing to next month.
Second.
I'll take the motion.
Oh, agent it.
I'm sorry. I thought you were making it.
I'm sorry, I'm taking it.
Seconded by Trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the, we're gonna adjourn it till next month, get some more information.
Okay.
Okay, that brings us to a local law, to amend chapter two fifteen, Rental Registry two fifteen dash three, to delete that portion of the law requiring a fully executed lease as part of the application. We had discussed this briefly. Do you wanna go over it again briefly, counsel?
This is just to, um, delete that section of two fifteen dash three, four, A, I'm sorry, B four, which required a true, final and complete signed copy of the lease between the owner and tenant as part of the application. Um, and the building department was saying that it wasn't necessary, and it was holding up processing such applications, and they requested this from the board.
Okay.
I have no objection to this.
Do we have, we're gonna open, I have a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the public hearing is now open. Do we have any members of the public that wish to comment on this? Nobody? Trustee Corse, did you wanna say something?
Um, I think it's a good idea. I participated in this process. It was, it went very well. I submitted the lease. I rented my house for uh, three weeks in August. Um, and I could never see the point, but when you actually went through the process and you finally got a copy of the lease and you deposited it, 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 it really, it was just a burden, but I think it was a burden on the homeowners, also a burden on the building department. We have, we have a lot of applications.
Yeah.
So all of a sudden.
A lot of them were on, were really on hold while we were waiting for them.
And you're waiting for the lease to be finalized, and, and I'm in favor of removing that. This is all about safety. And I think the fa, the fact that we have such great participation, uh, makes me very, very pleased indeed that we know that every one of those persons has gone through their home and checked it out, and made sure that the pool alarms and the smoke alarms and that everything else is in order. So I'm very much in favor of this one.
Thank you.
I absolutely agree.
So we have nobody in the public that wishes to comment on this. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Corse, so I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Corse, second? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay, alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The local law is now adopted.
Great.
That brings us to local law to amend Village Code, Chapter two forty subdivision of land, Article seven, variances and waivers, to clarify the waiver section of the subdivision of the code and create a subdivision waiver provision for those subdivisions that donate a lot for preservation. Did you wanna go over this briefly, counsel?
Sure, so this is just adding a section to the waiver provision under Chapter two forty for subdivisions, um, where the planning board will have the authority to waive, uh, subject to appropriate conditions, the subdivision regulations, um, when there's going to be a lot, where one, where they're creating two lots, and one of those lots is going to be donated to or acquired by the town, county, state, federal government, or qualified not-for-profit, uh, conservation organization for open space purposes or other parkland. Um, and this was sent to the Suffolk Planning Commission. We have not heard back, so we can open it for public comment, but you cannot adopt it tonight till we hear back from Suffolk Planning Commission. And also, we had to address whether or not, um, you wanna keep in the language that those lots, once they're subdivided, will conform to zoning.
Right, that was.
That's the language that I, 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 you know, I don't know how the board feels about it, but.
And is it guaranteed? Well, we have to open this.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to do before we started. So I have a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, who have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Plum, alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is now open. So I just wanted to, before anybody talks, this was all, this was put in motion. I had discussions with Southampton Town. They have interest in purchasing some open space in Sag Harbor on lots that have been, I guess, co-joined, that, or merged, and they, you know, the homeowner now wants to subdivide for preservation purposes, which would actually in one instance, could reduce the amount of construction on the property. So that was the whole, uh, edifice of this, or to get this started, so the law, I believe, is similar to the law that Southampton Town had adopted.
They have the same.
So I was actually approached by CPF about this.
I think.
So I, I, I think the one thing is to add, not just donate, but could be acquired, so that's where the CPF, right, so, so that was a new change that that council suggested or, um, has written in. But then the other question was about the size of the lot, whether it should be equal. In, in wanting to have flexibility in there to potentially promote more of this, um, I think it might not be as smart to demand that it be equal, but that there be flexibility in the sizes of what is up for donation or potentially up for being.
I would say that that's important, only because if, if somebody might wanna donate a portion of their land as a walkway to access, right, to access a, a public space.
If they don't, if you don't take out, conform the zoning, they would then have to go to ZBA to get a lot area variance, because they have to meet the twenty thousand square foot.
That was my question, so if you have, if you have a lot that is merged, and when you've when you.
There's not gonna be twenty thousand.
There's not gonna be twenty thousand.
You've got a lot area variance from the zoning board appeals.
Right, and would there be, uh, also is required that there's public access to this land, once it, it, like, if you, if land goes in conservation?
Well, that depends.
That's up to the CPF.
Acquiring it, that depends on the entity acquiring it.
Yeah.
Or, um, preserving it. If it's a town or, or municipal government, then it's very likely going to be subject to the public open access. That's one of the requirements of the CPF law.
Can we make that?
If it's like a private, not-for-profit, they can use properties differently, and you would negotiate that probably.
So, let me use an example, so I can get this clear in my head. I like examples. So I have a piece of property that's three quarters of an acre with a house on it. And I wanna give half an acre, I wanna sell half an acre into CPF, so I'm still, or I just wanna sell a quarter of an acre to CPF, so I'm still, that's worth twenty thousand square feet, so zoning is good. I've done nothing with the land I want to give to CPF, other than look at it for the years and pay taxes on it. So if I sell it to CPF, I get the, develop, whatever development rights would have been on half an acre in the village, if any, because it's under the R twenty zoning. And then I deny public access. So for the.
No, CPF would never allow it.
They would never allow it?
No, the town would not. The towns, municipalities, part of the community preservation law and New York State town law, um, which authorizes these purchases, requires public access.
Okay, that's fair enough.
All of it, yeah. It's only when it's to a not-for-profit, private, like, um, a nature conservancy, where they can take the property, um, and then sell it privately or do something private with it.
And can you sell development rights on a piece, because that's what you essentially be doing, if you're selling the development rights?
Uh, well, it depends.
It depends, or you'd be selling the whole property?
They could buy that way.
They could buy that as well.
Okay, all right, I understand that.
They could buy easement, they could buy development rights, they could buy it in fee, they could do it different ways.
That's why I need an example, just.
This doesn't apply to the lot on Suffolk Street Extension, does it, where we wanna do the pass-through for the kids?
This would, this would apply.
To anywhere in the village.
To anywhere in the village.
You know what I'm talking about?
But that's already owned by Southampton Town.
Does anybody in the public wish to opine on this? Anybody on Zoom? So we have to adjourn this to next month anyway, but I think it's a good.
I think it's a good idea. I just needed to get some things clear in my head.
I mean, for, for instance, we have a park, Steinbeck Park. There's a piece of real estate that's up for sale there. Somebody could, uh, whoever buys that, sell a portion of it to CPF for access to the park. Just an idea, just a concept. I'm not saying that's gonna happen. Just saying it's a, at least something that.
Or a portion of it.
Yeah.
Right.
And not necessarily an equal.
More preserved land, the better, so I guess we, we.
So, yeah, yeah. So we have a motion to adjourn till next month.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Corse, second?
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourn till next month. That gets us to discussion items. We have access to renewable power update by Mary Ann Eddy.
This is George, fifth point, Mary Ann Eddy, ninety-six Hampton Street. And this is a continuation of a conversation that we had way back in April, when Arthur came here, talked about, um, CCA, Community Choice Aggregation. There was also some small discussion about something called CDG, which is Community Distributed Generation. These are both ways for the public, for people to access, small business to access the benefits of solar power without putting panels on their roof. And when we were here in April, we thought it was gonna be go, 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 CCA. You know, Southampton Town was very in favor of it. They were taking in bids, and since we've talked slightly um, there was legislation, I don't understand it. All I know is, it's all on hold now. There, there's something about the opt-in, opt-out kind of nature of the way that things were set up, and it's all on hold. But, you know, like the Aaron the Tortoise, here comes the tortoise. So it's CDG, suddenly it's all alive and awake. The thing that we have here, that's where a developer comes in, gets permission from a landowner, in this case, it was Southampton Town, to build a solar array. And they put in a huge solar array over the transfer station off of Majors. Part of the deal there is that they have to give, um, they get to keep some of it for their own property, but they have to give, like, another portion of it, forty percent of which goes to Southampton Town, the profits. Sixty percent of it has to go to residents and small businesses. So that's why I'm here talking about what we might be able to, um, benefit as citizens and small um, small businesses here. So this is, uh, yes, four-megawatt, uh, North Sea Community Solar Project. It's nearing completion. Um, the project is, is seeking about five hundred and fifty subscribers in Southampton Town. Half of us, or maybe it's more than that, is in Southampton Town. So this would be open to the residents that are Southampton Town residents. Not people like me that live in East Hampton, but it benefits the Southampton Town residents and small businesses. Um, okay, next slide, please. Um, it's really easy. Well, who isn't eligible? Anybody who has rooftop solar, they're not eligible. And what you do is you apply, you get your PSEG account verified, you get bill credits on your PSEG monthly statement, that's gonna be about eight percent every year, every month, for a twenty-year. That must be the nature, the, the length of the contract that this developer has with Southampton Town. Um, slide, please. Um, it could not be easier. So you, online at this, um, particular website, put your contact information in, which includes name, email address, your phone, and you have to upload a PSEG bill or a photo of page one. The reason you have to do this is, say that it's open for about five hundred and fifty residents. What it is, is that there's a pool of kilowatts that are available. So they're estimating, estimating that that would be about high five hundred and fifty. But you have to take a look at your PSEG bill, get that in there, figure out how much you use, so that together this five hundred, five fifty, six hundred residents, don't go over the allocation of kilowatts that are available as this part of the program, right?
Can, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So if someone were to enroll, do they pay anything upfront, or is there any? You just have to go through the process?
Yeah. Yeah.
And then they get an eight percent discount?
And it's first come, first served.
It is first come, first served. And you can cancel anytime, but it could take like a couple billion cycles to make you pay that eight percent.
Okay.
I remember you mentioned earlier when we were talking about this, maybe, um, low-income housing or low-income individuals.
So when this started, um, I don't know, a year, maybe two years ago, because it's taken them a long time to get that solar array up and iron out all the wrinkles. They were going to actually, um, make it, um, uh, a preferential kind of lottery, whatever, for people that were low middle income. And now all this bang, it's first come, first served, everybody's invited. So.
Thanks.
Um, so, next slide. This is what I'm here for. I'd like to give permission that we can post this on our website, if we put it on our Facebook page. We can let people in Southampton know that they can apply for this. And, you know, good slide.
As long as it's okay with council, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah.
I'm all for.
Since I get approved first.
Yeah, you got it.
Right. There is some skinny possibility.
Did you scan the code?
I'm on the list.
So it is, it's first come, first served. And somebody that did apply, Bob, when you were talking about that, when it was low and middle income, they sent in a, um, uh, an application. And, yeah, they got all these emails back, you're enrolled, blah, blah, blah. They don't think the benefit's going to start to hit like your, uh, bill until the first quarter sometime.
That's, there it is.
When you say lottery, it's first come, first served. It's literally who gets.
That was before it was a lottery and it had some low, middle income. Now it's simply first come, first served.
Get a little closer for that, actually.
I just, I just got it.
Well, we're in, we're on East Hampton side, so.
Well, there's a picture of it, right?
That's true.
Oh, she's on both, sorry.
Yeah.
You're on the wrong side of the vision street.
Yeah.
Now, there's a slight possibility the village might get some funding for this. Because I'm going to submit like a little marketing plan. I'm going to say that we're going to try to get ten households. If we get ten households, then we get five thousand dollars. Better than a kick in the shits, right? The only problem is, is that if I submit this tomorrow or the next day, it could take them three or four weeks to approve that. And by then, the five hundred and fifty slots might be taken. So I think we just let it rip and let people apply. And if they happen to approve, um, uh, our application for the grant, you know, then it's all good, but I don't think we.
And you apply for village-owned buildings?
No.
It's just private.
Private residence.
Private.
Private residence and small businesses. But it can be businesses, and this is more detailed than we really need, like Chia Boni's that has extensive refrigeration.
Yeah.
There's a different code on their bill. That's why you have to upload your code.
I see.
Uh, upload your bill because it talks about, uh, here's the utility of where he knows.
You're doing great, Mary Ann.
But you can be like certain types of commercial. But small businesses, most of Main Street would be just fine. And most of Main Street, I think, is in Southampton Town, right?
Yeah.
So I saw Helen Giardia on the, um, on the sidewalk and I said, I have a deal for you. So I went and talked to them.
Excellent. Thank you very much. It's really interesting.
Thank you for making us aware of that.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that brings us to Public Art Project, the church. Welcome. Eric.
Oh, yeah, Eric Fitchell, April Gornick, and Shere Passorella. For forty-eight paths. We're, uh, here to propose a, uh, public art project. And in the summer of twenty twenty-five, we're curating a, uh, an exhibition, all sculpture, all animals. Which we think would be very attractive to a broad public. And we thought it would be a perfect opportunity for the village to, uh, participate in placement of some of these, uh, sculptures. And, uh, we've, we've sort of located certain spots we think would make sense. The Steinbeck Park, Dean Juan, the end of the wharf, uh, Marine Park. Anything else?
Potentially the monuments.
Oh, yeah, po- potentially, we would, uh, look to Whaley Museum or the Customs House to see if I use in there a lawn as well. Uh, as you can see there, the project is paid for and insured by the church. And, uh, would be additional educational programings and events in relationship to it. Um, including, which I definitely shouldn't talk about, that's true. The, the show is titled, "The Art." And, uh, and we think that, uh, it would be great if we could involve the school kids in perhaps building an ark.
Well.
And that, that might be something.
Building and it's, you know.
Yeah. There's a lot of intersections there, right? Yeah.
So this is a docs project now?
And, uh, you know, there's plenty of, uh, of evidence that, uh, uh, towns, cities, et cetera, that, uh, use, uh, art, public art as part of their, the experience of the, their living, uh, have great benefits, both economically in terms of, you know, mental and spiritual health, et cetera, et cetera. So we think that that would be something that would be attractive, as well as, not only for the people that live in the village, but also, uh, a destination site for, uh, people to come see what the hell is going on here.
Could I ask that you consider reaching out to Mash Park as well? Otter Pond and Mash Park is forty acres of open sp- I mean, I'm looking at that slide, but also just the animals you're curating for the Otter Pond area too, that's pretty much unused. We discussed that at a pond.
All those kind of fanciful shapes.
And the kids with theirs.
I mean, it's just Mash Park, it's its own five oh one C three, so, but we do seek any kind of collaborative buy-in. Like, that's why we mentioned the custom house, definitely Mash Park, but, you know, to you guys, we thought.
April, can you speak into the microphone?
Sorry, uh, we.
Microphone is actually the one on the ceiling.
Oh.
It should pick you up. You don't have to look at it.
Just gotta get. You gotta get in a little closer.
You gotta get underneath it where Eric is projecting.
You know, the, the whole, the whole idea of what the church has always been is to, is to have collaborative projects with other institutions and, um, just to, you know, it's community building and bringing people together. And this is just such a fun, exciting way of being able to do this. So definitely Mash Park is a great interest choice. Anybody who's interested in doing this would be terrific. Because they're their own five oh one C three, that's why we just were garrulating it down for anything that might affect you directly with the video tape. Um, so.
Okay.
So I think, um, that the idea is, is simple and obvious in itself. There, there are pragmatics involved, which Sherry's going to talk to. Because it does involve some serious things in terms of installation, insurance, et cetera, et cetera.
These were the sites that April just referred to that are, um, oh, okay.
Stand up with a comb.
Yeah.
Uh, oops, sorry. Unlike the, um, as you suggested, um, Mashm- Shumala Park, these are sites that have been, um, that we've discussed internally uh, as sort of dream sites that are, of course, public space that we're seeing by the village as opposed to any other private or not-for-profit entity. And so that is for which we are making this presentation today. Um, important facts to know is that the church would organize and manage the selection, shipping and installation of the artworks as a function of our professionally staffed arts cultural organization that works full-time year-round to do such things. Uh, number two, the village would provide a, hopefully a liaison to work with us on ensuring that the works are safe and well-installed. Um, number three, the church would be responsible for ongoing maintenance and care. Number four, the works are on loan, which means they would be borrowed from varied sources and then be returned to those sources at the end of the term. Um, next slide, please.
Can I ask, how long do you think the duration of the loan would be?
Great question. Um, the, oh, it's coming up in the next subsequent slide.
Okay.
The, um, opening would be probably the third weekend of June in twenty twenty-five, on view through the last week, the first weekend of September in twenty twenty-five. So the entire, um, summer season, essentially.
So you'd have to add on, uh, receiving artworks, repairing sites, installing, et cetera.
Yeah.
Any sense how long that would be the prep and break down?
That's.
Coming up. I'll, I'll stop asking questions.
Um, that Eric actually did some really fancy Photoshop work here um, to show some of the exciting ideas that could be coming our way. These are all sort of internationally renowned artists.
And just, just so you know, I didn't cut the head off of the gorilla as part of the Photoshop. That is the sculpture.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are these, would these sculptures be freestanding? Would they require the creation of a plant or any?
They do all, both. They are freestanding, but they do require professional armatures underneath.
And bases and stuff. The, the, the one that we're proposing for the end of the wharf is basically a twenty-foot-high by twenty-foot uh, sculpture, uh, with a eight-foot, uh, square steel base that we'd have to build a, a concrete thing on top of, et cetera, et cetera. So.
So we need to, yeah.
We have some logistics.
I think that's a little too much for the end of Long Wharf, if you ask me.
I don't think, I, none of this is, none of this is our final presentation. This is just.
I could see something like where the peop- where people sit, where we call basically the end, like the park in the wharf.
Yeah.
Something of smaller stature out there.
No.
But that could cause, I think, issues.
These are structures for zoning.
Right.
So you may recall the likes case, right? The second department determined that they structure, that sculptures actually are structures that are subject to zoning. So.
Right.
That is something to consider.
And I was just looking at that as far as engineering and the, the weight capacity of the wharf and whatever. I know there's, there's tanks and.
Eleven tons.
Eleven tons. So that would all have to, I love the idea. I'm not, I don't want.
Yeah, the concept.
The concept is great.
Down by David's.
Yeah.
As a traffic, uh.
Yeah.
That's it.
That's perfect. Like a turning circle, the turning wings.
I'm just saying.
Right. This, can I just ask, can you help me a few more bars about the zoning requirements, hurdles we'd have to go through?
So, I mean, it would really depend. I, I think we'd have to talk to the building department because just, I just remember that the likes case was pretty controversial and the second department came down and said that a sculpture, an art sculpture constitutes a structure for zoning purposes.
Is that a permanent installation?
No, that, uh, it's, it's the structure, it's, it's a structure.
Okay.
So it has to meet zoning. So in that case, I think it was way too high.
Yeah. So that, that's just.
That was just, uh.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. That we don't want to get bogged down in that right there.
Be good to know what the restrictions are.
And then I would just say for Steinbeck, we would want to talk to, we just inform Southampton because of CPF.
Yeah.
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 But again, it's something that's open to the public. Everybody gets to view it.
Right. I'm sure they would love it. We just.
It's, it's really for fun. I mean, it's, it's, it's art, so it's an experience, but it really is for.
It's educational, raises awareness.
Yeah. And, and because, you know, the art and climate change and blah blah, it's pretty obvious. But, yeah, so, and we could, that's one of the things that we could work into, educational programming or, um, community discussions. We always have those at the church anyway. And, um, we could do public tours, talks, and a scavenger hunt, which sort of harkens back to the walking shoes of yours. So, you know, because we're supposed to go out and talk. So, um, but that's, those are just ideas.
Really fun.
Um, and, and again, this is repeating that we do not collaborate to buy in or participation. However, people want to participate, but it could just be through the initiative, we, I spell off with the chemists properly. Or it could, you know, it could expand into all sorts of other, like, even innovative outlets. Or something else, or whatever. We welcome all that stuff. So that's just, but that's just general idea.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks. Um, so now the next two slides are logistics. Um, this here is the proposed timeline. Um, from now through the end of the year, we would take on the arduous task of fundraising to support the project. Um, January twenty twenty-five, the church would present for your consideration, final selection, uh, for your review and approval. Uh, March, the village to render approval for the works, meaning there's a proposed two-month window for that approval to be received. The logistics coordination begins thereafter. Um, the logistics, uh, research is done in the interim period. In other words, for each one of these works of art, there's a certain amount of engineering that's required in order to, um, understand, um, site utility and feasibility. Um, we, we'll get to a little bit how we propose doing that, but for now, this is the timeline. Uh, the works would be shipped aside for her in May. And during that month, the public mountain bases would be installed in the sites. Installation and opening in June, and then de-installation and return shipping in September. Um, there are, uh, uh, obviously options for, um, the remediation of the sites. Uh, I worked on public art projects in New York City where we actually donated to use of the bases to the city afterwards. Like, so along Park Avenue now, you can put a sculpture on, like, Park and Seventy-Sixth. And that was because a place that I worked for donated that after having this sculpture there. Um, in terms of project management, uh, we would actually, uh, be seeking to partner with a professional arts logistics company to oversee the proper shipping and installation and the creation of these spaces. As I said, public art does require a certain amount of engineering to ensure the safety of the works, but more importantly of the public. Um, it's an utmost concern with public art and therefore it's a serious undertaking. Our staff is professional at the church, which hopefully you guys know. Um, but there are wonderful logistics companies in art that, um, we believe would be wonderful partners for projects like this. Um, the budget is, is considerable. Uh, the church will fundraise to cover the expenses of the project. Below is an idea so that you know about what costs associated with this are for these particular sculptures. Um, so these estimates are based on these particular works. Things like you said, if something, if you said, well, twenty, twenty, twenty feet, uh, and eleven tons is too big, then, well, you know, that makes a smaller budget if we're looking at smaller works, for example. The total budget is between, uh, three thirty and basically ninety thousand dollars. Um, and then I think that's the last.
Can I make one more? Come on, I'm sorry about your, your timeframe, your logistics. Just the sites that you're, you're looking at, I'm thinking Marine Park, Simon, I can take a. One of the problems with the bases is irrigation systems that are currently there, especially if they end up being permanent bases. So I would ask that between now and early next year, not wait until the spring of next year, to find the locations that might be suitable within those, that wouldn't.
Yeah.
You're also gonna have to go through, as council says, has to go through the building department to make sure, you know, whatever, make sure you have detailed drawings of what the base and what the sculpture's gonna look like so they can review it.
Yeah, the weight, everything. And that's, I mean, that's why we're trying to engage. There's one company in particular that we're thinking about that are professional art handlers, and we think they might like to be sponsors of this. So the bulk of its cost is really in the shipping and the installation and that.
Right.
But if we could find a partner that could, that could really help, at least have that amount of money, it would be incredibly useful somewhere.
Who in the village knows where the sprinklers are?
That would be D Yardley.
That I was gonna say, is there perhaps?
T Yardley.
That's superintendent of public works.
Yeah.
And who would be us, for us to have a liaison, um, you had suggested that we identify the sites. It might be more efficient if the, if the village can inform us where a ideal locations are, um, or at least a general zone. Yeah.
I'll do that.
Oh, and that would.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah.
Generally speaking, the easiest way to find irrigation system is to dig them up and break them up. That's what everybody else.
I don't think that's, that's not that D's preferred method, but.
Yeah.
No, I know, but it's what happens. It's only plastic pipes.
But we, we, we looked at that issue with Steinbeck Park with the step, with the statue that I know that you love. For that one already. And there's.
Did that, by the way, have to go through the, the housing, public, what it, this?
It wasn't twenty feet high. It wasn't twenty feet high.
Zoning.
That sculpture that's.
So how does that? How did that?
That's what we're talking about.
That's what he's talking about.
Bench.
Yeah.
The bench and the dog, and the dog.
And the dog.
Anyway, well, I look forward to talking to him about this and we could also, you know, like, if, if the bases are useful for something, literally can keep them around. And if not, they'll be, the ground will be remediated.
And that's why the site's really important is where they are, except.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Because we did this at the church, you said, we've had a couple of big spaces on the lawn and we're very careful about where they go. And then, you know, as we can, we can patch that.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. It's exciting.
Okay, that brings us to our action items. Uh, resolution, Incorporated Village of Sag Harbor Resolution for the Board of Trustees to accept the annual audited financial statements for fiscal year ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I'll move it.
Motion.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, seconded by Trustee Cora. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Resolution, Incorporated Village of Sag Harbor Resolution to re-establish the Capital Reserve Fund. And this was, Charles spoke about this briefly. The fund is there. What we're basically doing is re-establishing it. Nothing comes out of the fund or no funds are expended without the, uh, uh, cons. Nothing comes out of the fund or no funds are expended without the, uh, consideration and approval of this board.
I'll move it.
Motion by Trustee Plum, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Incorporated Village of Sag Harbor Resolution to authorize two village police officers to attend the Street Smart Cop Proactive Training Patrol Tactics Training. I'll make the motion on this.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Incorporated Village of Sag Harbor Resolution to approve the installation of the Peconic Estuary Chronologue Sign at Windmill Park. My only question on this, Mary Ann, is that it be installed where it's not blocking any views of the water? Is that possible, where we can?
Well, it depends where you're standing, but we, it originally been, like, almost directly in front of the Herder Monument in the wild, and I thought that wasn't so great. So we moved it down closer to the, where there's a tree and a picnic table, and the big thing.
Closer towards the windmill or away from the windmill?
Away from the windmill, moving it less.
I would just say that we, we go over the location before it's.
Okay.
That's all, that's all I'm saying.
It's not permanent.
Right, okay.
You put it in and then you go, oh, you know, that wasn't a good idea.
We can move it very easily.
It may interface with the boardwalk, but that's down the line.
That's down the line, yeah, this is.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make it.
Motion by Trustee Corus, second.
Sorry.
Seconded by Trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Resolution Incorporated, thank you. Resolution Incorporated Village of Sag Harbor Resolution to appoint Robert Bory as harbor master, one.
Move it.
Second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, seconded by Trustee Corus, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Resolution Incorporated Village of Sag Harbor to authorize mayor to sign an agreement with Suffolk County Water Authority for payment in lieu of restoration.
Moved, so moved.
Motion by Trustee Corus, have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Incorporated Village of Sag Harbor Resolution to authorize mayor to sign a consulting agreement with Cityscape Consultants for wireless consulting. This final number came in at twenty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents, because the other municipalities had signed on to this.
Yep.
Cell phone study, we had budgeted for forty thousand, so.
This would be great to roll right into the plan.
Absolutely.
So moved.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Trustee Kane, second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Corus, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Incorporated Village of Sag Harbor Resolution to accept the resignation of Ronald Reed, member of the planning board. I'd just like to thank Ron for his service on the planning board. And I need a motion to accept his resignation. Motion by Trustee Plum, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Incorporated Village of Sag Harbor Resolution to authorize village to enter into consulting agreement with Cullen and Donowski LLP for accounting services. Again, this is what Charles had spoken about. The annual cost not to exceed forty-five thousand, which keeps us within the budget.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Trustee Corus, second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Incorporated Village of Sag Harbor authorizing the Village of Sag Harbor to enter into an agreement with I M E G for sewer shed K and L bid in construction phases.
This is construction manager.
This is, this is for construction management. We're a little, do you think we should postpone this, or should we just go ahead with this?
I think we should.
I, I, I think.
It's a big number.
Yeah, I know, and this was what we, we had put together, but seeing as all of the bids came in over, we have a way, we have a lot of negotiation, I'm not sure if this is, if we're gonna.
I, I agree.
Do we need this in place for them to perform that negotiation, though?
We might, but, but I have concerns with some of this too, and have it, some of the wording as well, let's.
Maybe you can limit the scope for the next meeting.
Let's, let's, let's.
Yeah, let's table it, so I have a motion to table.
Are they, here's the thing, wait a second now, before we, I don't wanna rush that too, because this is structured as fixed fees for each stage.
Yes, this is K and L.
The cheapest phase we're in right now, the bid phase, it's only eight thousand dollars. I have no problem with that.
Right.
I'd have no problem proving that. I have concerns about things like their design phase is a lump sum of a quarter of a million dollars.
Yes.
And how does that get paid? Because when I look at the payment terms, it could be, they can ask for a lump sum payment.
Huge.
For design, so that, so it's not really, the, the, how this gets paid out, other than the phase we're in now? I have concerns about the quarter of a million, that one point two million dollar construction.
We have the time to, to, to dig into this.
But, but I hate.
But I don't wanna stop the work that's going on at the moment.
Agrees, so what do they need to continue that work?
That is a question I don't have an answer to right now.
But we're not stopping anything now.
We're not stopping, we want them to, I mean, they, we still know what their hourly rate is and everything else that they've done up to this point. So they need to continue that, because they're gonna be entering into discussions with the, the two bidders that they are investigating right now. So I'm not sure, can we just let that go as the regular consulting that they do for us on the regular?
It would depend, uh, if it's covered by the previous consulting agreement, they had to set this up, remember there was some.
This is for execution.
This is for the next part, so I, we have to check the agreements.
So we, have we been paying them to date, uh, on a separate contract, and then this?
Yes, as part of their regular consulting on this, but this was completely separate, this is to have people on site, to, you know, they'll have people on site every day to oversee
Right.
the work that's taking place for K and L.
But it's also for the bid phase services, which were, this is what.
This is what we're in now, yeah.
So, so, you know, whatever we either, and I'm concerned, if we let them take as much time and pay them on an hourly rate, it's gonna be very expensive for the consulting services we paid. But I have concerns about some of these fixed fee arrangements, especially for the outer stuff, the big dollars.
Yep.
Another thing I just want, I don't, I'm not loving about this is, in this, they get, all the design documents are theirs, they're not ours, so we're gonna pay them a million, two million dollars to design our stuff, and they say they own the documents, they'll charge us if we want them. Um, we're gonna need that work for the ongoing future.
Yes, we are.
Um, so things like that, and there's, there's an ownership provision in here that says they own everything, that they do. We own it, we, it's my view, we should.
Yeah, also, it's not necessarily true that a fixed sum is less than working by the hour either.
It, it, it incentivizes them to do less.
To fix some, yes.
Which is not necessarily a terrible thing.
But working on a project like this by the hour is basically getting into the taxi and flipping the meter on.
Exactly, and that's a blank check.
Yeah, is a blank.
There's a balance to strike.
So, is there, um, if we table this tonight, does that stop all work on this project?
That, that's their call.
I think we can table this tonight and talk tomorrow. And I think that's the best thing.
We just have a special meeting if we need to.
And we have, we need, this is a big deal, and today was.
We, we kinda got, we got hit in the side of the head a little bit.
Yeah, this was an inflection point today, so.
But I think what I'd prefer to do is that not have them bill us time and materials for these negotiations.
Yeah.
Roll it all into whatever we've signed for the future agreement on this bid process and construction work.
Okay, maybe you and I will talk offline with this.
Okay.
That would be good.
If you look at it this way, fourteen million dollars is fourteen years of individuals at a hundred thousand dollars.
It's one, one point four million, not fourteen million. By the way, and, and one of the, it's, because, because if, if, if this comes outside of the, if this comes normal consulting time for them, for us to go through this process, the bid negotiations, is that also reimbursable on the grants? As opposed to this?
If this is part of the construction, it is reimbursable in the grants, especially in the federal grant.
That's why I wanna, I'd like to keep it all in this.
Yes, so let's table this now.
I have a motion to table this.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Who made the motion?
You did.
I did.
You made, you made it.
So, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Incorporated Village of Sag Harbor Resolution authorizing notice to proposers RFP for the Sag Harbor Landfill Environmental Consulting Service. This, this was a bid that we, RFP that we had put out, we had gotten the numbers back, correct? And it's, it's now, we're like a day or two past that time, so we're, we're asking them to rebid those same. Right. So we wanna, we wanna have that in place, so we can take action on it if necessary. This is for the test war halls up at the landfill.
Absolutely.
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Corus, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Authorization to refund the following small claim assessments. See Scott Brown, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and twelve cents, Doug Atkins, two thousand fifty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents, and Roman Lozan, one thousand eighty-six dollars and seventy-one cents.
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Action item, special event and special use permits. Kim, it should be Carrie Garapi, I don't know, was it Kim? Okay, Kim Garapi of the Pearson PTSA requests permission to have the annual homecoming parade on Friday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, from one PM to two PM, starting on Nassau Street and continuing down Main Street to Mash Hashmewit Park. Also requesting to place a sign on the grassy area of Long Wharf from August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four to September thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Need a motion?
I'll, I'll move that they do it thirty days in advance next.
Well, that, that was one of the things we were talking about, yeah.
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Has this been approved by the police department, I'm assuming, yeah, that's all, yeah. Oh, good.
Yeah.
Oh.
So we'll have it finalized tomorrow.
Okay.
So what should we do? Can we approve it?
Subject to the, yes.
Approval of the police department.
Subject to the, to it, to the.
So I have a motion by Trustee Kane to approve, subject to approval of police scheduling, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Sean Elliott of the Breakwater Yacht Club requests authorization to have the Bruce Tate Memorial at the Breakwater Yacht Club on October sixth, twenty twenty-four, from two PM to seven PM.
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, second? Seconded by Trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Drew Harvey of the Dog Patch Bandits Incorporated requests authorization to have the twenty twenty-four fundraising event at Kid Squid on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, from three to six PM.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Kane, seconded by Trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Tim and Safron Case request authorization to have a wedding celebration clam bake at Havens Beach on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, from four to seven thirty PM.
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Joseph and Justin Butts request authorization to have a memorial service at Havens Beach on September twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, from three to seven PM.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Kane, second?
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Susan Conklin of Bridgehampton UFSD requests permission to have a Halloween carnival at the Custom House, nine twelve Main Street, on October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, from eleven AM to four PM. Also requests to place a sign on the grassy area of Long Wharf from October thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, to October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, seconded by Trustee Corus, all those in favor?
Aye.
Have we had an application for the Ragamuffin Parade?
Oh, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
When's that?
It's probably the same day.
So moved, yeah, probably. Okay, that gets us to the approval of the payment of the bills.